All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to City Hall. We have almost a full house tonight, which is great. Before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Bob Weber, and then please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedom and opportunity to gather here tonight. We pray that you will guide us in all of our discussions and give us wisdom in deciding the issues we face tonight. We ask you to watch over our staff as they protect and serve our community. We also ask that you watch over all of our men and women that serve our country at home or abroad. Finally, we ask you for the courage and wisdom to be good stewards of our citizens' trust and their resources. In Jesus' name, amen.
Once again, welcome to City Hall. I'm your Mayor Eric Strumpf, and now we will have a roll call by our clerk.
Bray.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Coon.
Here.
Lubert.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum this evening. First underneath number five, under miscellaneous agenda items, if I could have Steve Schleeter come forward, please. Steve is our Finance Director here at City Hall. Steve, you've been here 13 years?
13 years.
13 years. What I have here is a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and this is presented to the City of Jefferson. And Steve, I understand that this is the 14th year that we've received this, and I just think it's a great thing for your leadership that, once again, we're receiving this as a city. So congratulations to you as a department. All right. All right. Steve said he would accept that on behalf of his staff. Moving on, Mr. Mike Flanagan. During American Red Cross Month, we would like to thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross and have been doing so for more than 130 years. In Jefferson City and Cole County, the employees and the volunteers of the Red Cross help to support when disaster strikes. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families. United States Presidents have called on the American Red Cross to help support its mission for nearly 100 years. Now therefore, I, Eric J. Strumpf, Mayor of Jefferson City, by virtue of the authority vested in me, to hereby proclaim March as American Red Cross Month, and we encourage all citizens to do so. Mike, congratulations. I want to thank all your... All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Mike. Next on our agenda this evening, if I could have Chief Rennick and Captain Tim Young of our Fire Department. Here a few weeks ago, I was lucky enough to go to the State Capitol to the Governor's Office along with our firefighters. I'm not going to read the whole decree, but this is a proclamation from Governor Jay Nixon, and here's one part of it that's especially special to us here in Jefferson City. "Whereas on January 26th, 1842, a meeting of the townspeople was held at the Cole County Courthouse, and resolutions were presented to the city, these resolutions became the backbone of today's fire department that dealt with fire extinguishment, investigation, and the prevention of fires. Two fire companies were formed that night, one east of Madison Street and the other one west of Madison. As a former firefighter myself, as a volunteer fireman, it is indeed an honor, Chief, to present this to you and your department."
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce the members of our committee. About a year and a half ago, we formed a Centennial Committee to plan our events for this year. Captain Steve Holtmeyer could not be with us tonight, but I do have Captain Darren Reuter, Driver Operator Kelly Fork, and firefighter Doug Platter that are members of our committee. I'd like to thank them for their hard work.
Tim, before you get away, Tim, I know people will be hearing this all year, but tell us in just a real quick little summary what's planned for later this year for your 100th anniversary, please.
There's a few events that are scattered through Fire School in June and then again for Fourth of July, but the main events will be October the 4th, October 6th, and October 7th. Especially October 6th and 7th, that's a Saturday and Sunday. That Saturday, we're planning a large parade of fire engines through Jefferson City and a fire engine rally around the Capitol that day. The Sunday event will be held at our Training Center as an open house, and we're going to represent the future of where the Fire Department is headed in the next 100 years.
Tim, thank you very much. And Chief, congratulations to you and your men for being here tonight, and what a great honor for our city. Moving on, no public hearings this evening. Underneath number seven, the following minutes or reports have been filed here at City Hall. Plumbing Board of Review and Examiners, Parks and Recreation Commission of January 10th, Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Historic Preservation Commission, Cultural Arts Commission, the mural permit administrative hearing, and the Environmental Quality Commission. If you would like to serve on one of our boards or commissions, you can do so by filling out an application on our website, or you can contact Gail Strope, our HR Manager. Moving on next to council committee reports, our first committee will be the Administration Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. The next Administration Committee will be Wednesday, March 14th, at 8:00 a.m. in the lower level of City Hall. We will discuss the public art policy, paperless council packets, amending the ordinance for the Electrical and Plumbing Board, and appointments review, and commercial recycling update. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Moving on to our Finance Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Rich Coon.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 15th, immediately following your morning event.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Coon. Moving on, Public Safety Committee, who is normally chaired by Mike Harvey and Dr. Pope, filled in last time. Dr. Pope.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety met last Thursday morning. We were presented three items. The first, the police chief gave us the report in the background on what will be presented tonight, the authorization for purchase of new vehicles under 2011-161. Secondly, we received the contract from staff that they've worked out with the county for the animal shelter. And thirdly, the Planning and Development Committee plus Department plus the Fire Department gave us updates on the new building and fire codes. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Thursday, March 29th, at 8:00 in the morning. However, we do have a special meeting that will be called for this Thursday afternoon, March 8th, at 3:00 p.m., where we will be presented and will discuss the new proposal from the Fire Department for the Fire Department Improvement Tax. So that's an important meeting for the committee and for us then to make our decision moving it on to the council. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Dr. Pope. Moving on to Public Works and Planning Committee, chaired by Councilman Bob Scrivner.
Thank you, Mayor. There are about four items on tonight's agenda that came out of the Public Works and Committee, Public Works and Planning Committee from our February 23rd meeting. Requests for amendment to temporary food licenses will be on the agenda tonight. The Moreland Avenue Neighborhood Improvement Program Petition Resolution is on the agenda. Neighborhood Improvement Program revisions on the agenda. The, I guess, those three items. We also had a report from staff as to their recommendations on the 2012 Milling and Overlay Program on disposal of transit buses. I guess that's on the agenda as well. Building and Fire Code revisions, which are updates which will be presented to the council sometime in the future. And then one thing that I found kind of interesting, staff told us about downtown recycling containers program that is being started. There'll be nine recycling containers placed downtown next to trash containers. They'll be identified for recycling for bottles and cans. So I would hope that people would take advantage of that and use that in the downtown area.
All right, thank you, Bob. Any council liaison reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to appointments by the mayor. I will call on Chief Schrader as we have some new appointments to the Jeff City Police Department. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'm submitting to you four candidates for appointment to the position of police officer. Before I introduce them, I will say that this selection process required that all candidates already have a license to practice law enforcement in the state of Missouri, so we will not be required to send them to any police academy. They already are licensed and able to be commissioned as a law enforcement officer with us, so that's a plus. I'd like the four candidates to rise, please. First is Alex Clausen. Alex, raise your hand. Alex is originally from Brookfield, Missouri. He has a Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Central Methodist University in Fayette. He received his license at the University of Missouri in 2011. He's presently employed with Classic Carpentry, and you can tell he was a high jumper of some renown. Next is Logan Kimberling. Logan is originally from Jamesport, Missouri. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Missouri Western University. He also received his license from the University of Missouri Law Enforcement Training Institute in 2011. He served in the United States Navy for six years, and he was a state sprint champion here in Missouri. Next is Mr. Dennis Peterson. Dennis, he's originally from Novinger, Missouri. He has an associate's degree and is presently seeking his undergraduate degree in Criminal Justice Administration. He received his license from Moberly Area Community College in 2002, and he served the United States Navy for two years. His claim to fame is in track and field. Also, Mr. Timothy Lopez is originally from Wyoming. He earned his Bachelor of Science degree in Criminal Justice from Columbia College. He graduated from the Law Enforcement Training Institute at the University of Missouri in 2006. He's currently a member of the Missouri Army National Guard. He previously worked at the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and he is sport was wrestling. So pleased to present these four very capable candidates.
All right, thank you, Chief. At this point in time, we'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Still moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. As your mayor, welcome to Jefferson City, Alex, Logan, Timothy, and Dennis, and your family that's here. Guys, I see that you're here with Dad. That's awesome. We have a great city, and welcome to it. If there's anything we can do, please let us know. Thanks again for being here. Chief may not have told you you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Okay, moving on, no presentations tonight from staff or invited guests. Nothing underneath number 11. Number 12 tonight, I have Tania Graves. There she is. Tania, you have five minutes. I understand you're here to talk about a food code thing that we have possibly coming up. Please tell us your name and address, and you have five minutes. Welcome.
Sure. I'm Tania Graves, and I am with G2 Gallery Catering and Events, and we are at 102 East High Street. I'm also a resident here in Jefferson City, and we are a catering facility that is not open to the public currently. What we're wanting to do is open up a food truck. So we are looking at that. One of the things that we've run up against is an ordinance that currently has a size restriction on the lot where we could operate a food truck. The size restriction currently is 50,000 square feet or larger, which restricts the areas of the city that we would really be able to operate our food truck. We have the base of our clientele in the downtown area, and we're very invested in the downtown area. We've been there for six years now as a business, and we are hoping that, we've proposed that the lot size be reduced and actually that be eliminated so that we can, you know, park on private lots. It does not have anything to do with city lots, doesn't have anything to do with state lots, or on city streets. We worked with Drew Hilpert. He came up with the language, and we did go through the Planning Committee to actually work on that food code. One of the other parts about the food code that we feel is fair and we wanted to propose was that there was not an unfair advantage given to mobile food units for, as far as fees for inspection. So we also proposed that the fees be raised for mobile food units so that brick-and-mortar stores have the same fees as the mobile food units as well. Okay, so those were the two proposals that we made to the Planning Committee, and we hope that if there are any questions or anything, if anybody has any, you know, any information that they'd like to know about what we're planning to do, or if we've heard, you know, if you've heard from others who have questions about that, we'd encourage people to send them our way. We think that it would be good for Jeff City. We have lots of statistics and have done the research on other cities and how that was done, and we presented that at the committee meeting, and we really think that it would be something that would be beneficial and worthwhile for the city. We hope that you see it the same way. All right?
Tania, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there any questions on behalf of Council of Ms. Graves? All right, thanks a lot for being here again.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, I have Gretchen Vislay, which I think's here to talk about Moreland and Resolution 2011-42. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name's Gretchen Vislay. I live at 1310 Moreland Avenue. I'm here tonight with some of my neighbors from Moreland, and maybe with a show of hands, the Moreland people back there. Thank you. But we're here to just show our support for the Neighborhood Improvement Project Resolution that is coming before the council tonight for a vote. On behalf of the residents on Moreland Avenue, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the council for your consideration of our petition and project, and I'd like to also extend our thanks for all the help and expertise that we receive from the city staff and our ward councilman, Ralph Bray, in this endeavor. Again, I just want to thank you, and we are hoping that you find this to be a project worthy of your approval this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any questions of Ms. Vislay? Seeing none. All right, good group you brought, by the way. Oh, Ralph has a question.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but I would make a motion that we bring Resolution 2011-42 before the floor, before the council at this time.
Okay, if no, if no one has a problem with that, we'll just go ahead and do that. Does anyone have an issue with that, an objection? Seeing none, we'll do that now. We will have a reading of Resolution 2011-42.
A resolution to endorse the Neighborhood Improvement Project for Moreland Avenue.
At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion on that resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Dr. Pope.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like our city councilor to clarify this for me. This resolution will not obligate any future councils, will it?
That is correct.
It won't. So if, in fact, there had to be any reprioritization, that would be possible for a future council?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I almost forgot. Our bill summary will be by Roger Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution this evening because at this point, we've already committed the funds in the current budget that are available for neighborhood improvements, so this project will have to wait for a future budget, and that's why it's a resolution to basically tell the neighborhood that it would be accepted. It meets all the requirements for moving forward, but we simply don't have the money, and that's related to Dr. Pope's question, is that it'll have to be considered in a future budget to be able to be funded. And the total cost of this project is $175,000 to do curbs and driveway approaches and sidewalks on a portion of it, and then the remainder of the streets would be simply curb and gutter where there are not sidewalks today and where it would be very difficult to build them.
Any questions of Roger? Are any questions of staff? Bob Scrivner.
I guess, and this was part of our discussion in our committee meeting, and I think there were members of the neighborhood that were present, so they're aware that, as Dr. Pope is questioned and Drew has confirmed, this doesn't obligate a future council, although many of the same council people may very well be a part of a majority of the next council. I'm not sure of that, but it could happen that way. But the practical conclusion or practical effect of this resolution is really just to confirm that we are, at this point in time, in favor of it, but it doesn't actually commit us to anything in the future. And the only reason I'm making this comment is because I just want the people of the neighborhood to realize that one council can't commit another council. And even though the practical result of it is, is that it probably would be followed through on, but I do want to make that comment.
I have a question for Steve. This is not in the budget this year?
No, that's correct.
Okay, so we have to put it in the budget we're currently working on?
Yes.
If this passes, could you make sure we do that? All right, thank you. So it at least start at that level, and I, there again, but I appreciate your comments because you can't necessarily guarantee. Dr. Pope?
Let me just add to my comment earlier. Not that you need to live in fear that we're not going to follow through, but should we have an outbreak of, you know, a half a dozen sinkholes or something unpredictable, we do have the flexibility, but if it's going to be in next year's budget, then just keep your fingers crossed. We don't have a bunch of sinkholes.
All right, any other questions or debate? Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Coon.
Aye.
Lubert.
Aye.
Pope.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to our consent agenda, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Oh, sorry? You know what? You have five minutes. Give us your name and address. Go for it. Tried ahead of time, and tonight I didn't, so my bad.
My name is Samuel Trapp. I reside, actually, at 47. I have so many addresses, it's hard to keep track. I have a Jeff City address and a couple of businesses here, but my main home is in Wardsville. I am here today to speak on behalf of Mr. Johnson, who owns Club Motivation. Now, there's a bill that's been introduced, 2011-153, that I've been through with him in detail. I've been through on my own. I am an attorney here in town, and I have gone through and looked at some of these, and I'm very concerned that this bill is targeting his business specifically. And I'm even more concerned that I believe this targets him in particular because of his race. And I, this business, and I've looked and I've checked it out, tried to find out whether or not there are any other businesses that fall into the category that you are trying to limit from being in operation from between 1:30 in the morning and 4:00 a.m. And he is required, if it is him, under this bill, he would be required to provide security and report people that are in a parking lot of a neighboring business. Where he's at, it's a large parking lot, houses many businesses, and if he's open between those two, apparently he has a duty under this to go and question people who are on the parking lots of another, of another neighboring business, and find out whether or not they have alcohol and report drugs and do things that nobody else is required to do. So in short, he's supposed to have his own, his own police force in effect between 1:30 and 4:00 o'clock. We have a sufficient number of Jefferson City police officers. There were quite a few in attendance at his business on Friday night. To be sure, there have been a couple of incidents at that, at that location, most of them prior to when he took over the business. I would caution that I think there should be much more review and discussion of this particular bill. I have some serious concerns about undercover cops this past weekend, dogs this past weekend. None of them, none of them called in, none of them brought over there. They're just there, patrolling one parking lot between 1:30 and 4:00 a.m. I have, you know, a concern as a citizen that perhaps crime is being committed, and by the way, so does, so does Mr. Johnson, and he has cooperated to the extent possible and put out there, and he doesn't want, he welcomes the police coming there. What he doesn't want to do is have his business be targeted for some sort of selective enforcement that is coming about and coming to his business and frightening away patrons that would otherwise give a good service. He's a non liquor license establishment. There is no liquor license there. He is open from 1:30 to 4:00. I'd suggest and request somebody tell me and Mr. Johnson what other businesses are potentially being targeted as a result of this, this bill. I'm not aware of any, and I've lived here for a while, and I know of no other places that are open in between there, and I'm quite concerned from a reading of it, and I know only have five minutes. I could frankly go on forever. I do speak a lot, but there is plenty to be concerned about. But there is plenty to be concerned about in this bill. A is the A1 assembly. Everyone should have to comply with the assembly requirements. Generally, no issue with that, except for what if it's not on his property? There are four different parking lots there. Failing to immediately consent to a fire inspection during those hours if the business is open to the public at the time of the requested inspection. I believe that's required of most other businesses to go in there, so that generally wouldn't be a problem. That's a nice public safety concern. On this one, C is where the problems begin. The license holder or its employee knows or should have known that there was alcohol on the premises or in the parking lots adjacent to the premises, and failed to report the same to the police department. What other business is under a duty to report people in the parking lot drinking beer? Do you have to do that if you own a convenience store? Do you have to do that? I suggest to you that that is outside of the scope of what, of what a business license is intended to do, and it would require him to have something that, if you want to fund it, I think you could mandate it and tell him to provide a security force or a police, police force, if you will. The other, the next one is also a newer, should have known, about illegal drugs. That attaches to him, and generally only him, a duty about the illegal drugs, fails to have required permanent lighting outside of the business. How far outside of the business? Where in the parking lot? It's a joint group parking lot. These things all need to be addressed if you're going to target a specific business. And the last one is fails to properly control customers. If a customer becomes unruly or abusive, it's the duty of the license holder to call and fully cooperate with the police or other law enforcement authority. Now, Mr. Johnson intends to do that. In fact, he has. He has called repeatedly, according to him, six or eight times over the eight or nine months that he has been in that business location. So approximately once a month, he asks the police department to come along. There may be problems he's not aware of that, that come along, and certainly they should be there. But to have 10, 10 police officer cars out there, not at his request, with dogs sniffing the tires of his customers while they're in the establishment is probably not, doesn't lead one to believe that the police are short of anything to do. Oh, I'm sorry. And I have trouble with him having the duty to control unruly behavior of patrons that he has no control over. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Mr. Trapp, thanks for being here tonight. Any questions from the council towards Mr. Trapp? Say none. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to number 13, as we were going to do under consent agenda. Minutes of the February 16th and February 20th of the city council meetings, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now we'll have first reading of Bill 2011-155.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Cole County regarding services at the Jefferson City Animal Shelter.
Mr. Hilpert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the agreement with Cole County that we've waited for some time. The agreement would provide that they'll pay us the $300,000 they promised out of their sales tax within 10 days of execution of the agreement. And each year, they would pay $100,000, $100,000 per year towards our costs. That would be increased by the CPIU each year. In exchange for that, we'll take all county residents' dogs who drop off animals, as well as any animal brought to us by the Cole County Animal Control, and we'll keep those dogs until released by them or the court.
All right, thank you, Drew. Any questions, Drew, on that? Dr. Pope?
Drew, did we take into account that there are no, in this contract, no leash laws in the county as far as the numbers that we would be receiving in the future?
I don't know that that was specifically considered.
Is it a given that we could revisit this if, in fact, any of the municipalities in the county or the county itself passed a leash law?
The contracts are five years, and after that, it's a year-to-year. So we could certainly, after the five years is up each year, consider if we needed to amend it.
The calculations were based on the current situation with no leash laws other than in the city of Jefferson?
I think that's correct.
Okay. Do you think that could be a problem for us if municipalities within the county that they're responsible for, or the county itself passed a leash law? We would have an increase in numbers?
I think if I, if I could, as one that, this was kind of started under the Landwear Administration, I kind of inherited this litter, so to speak. I think if that was to happen, if it was a game-changing event, I think we would, we would look at this and probably adjust it, Dr. Pope.
Would we be able to?
I think we would. I'll go to legal counsel to verify that, but I mean, I think that would be a changing event, obviously, if, if, if half the county went to a leash law.
We could certainly renegotiate that, but absolutely after the initial five-year period, it's year-to-year, and we can negotiate that for sure at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pope.
Mr. Hilpert, does it, does it apply to cities other than Jefferson City out, in the county?
It would, it would accept anyone outside of Jefferson City, all Cole County residents.
Do we know if the sheriff does enforcement in other cities, or do they do their own in?
Well, as far as I know, they do their own. I'm sure that, I guess I should say, I don't know the answer to that.
Councilman Bray had a question.
Drew, how, how did the, the five-year period come about? That is, that is, this is a new thing for us.
That's correct.
A new animal shelter, a new facility, it's larger, we're going to bring in and accept animals from all over the county. Would a, how did a five-year trial period come about, as opposed to a three or two or?
I think the five years is what the county expected at a minimum for their $300,000 donation. So I mean, that's kind of the investment they've made, so they want something for that $300,000 initially, and then after that, why, things may change or they may stay the same. Our last agreement, you know, lasted for well over 20 years, I believe, just on a year-to-year basis.
Any questions over here? To my right? Councilman Scrivener.
This, this agreement, with the exception of the donation for the new building and the change from a per-head count to a flat amount, it's essentially a renewal, isn't it, is it not?
It's going to result in a very similar financial contribution and very similar, you know, obligations on each party.
Okay. And then a second question. The, the agreement, as I understand it, is an agreement to accept animals from the sheriff's department. So the sheriff's department would have to have control of that animal and bring it to us. We're not agreeing necessarily to accept from anyone other than the sheriff's department, are we?
No, we would agree to accept Cole County residents who found a dog somewhere and wanted to drop it off.
So any resident that brought an animal in, we would accept it up to that 80% capacity?
That's correct. And as you said, it does cut off at 80% for just residents outside city limits.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on that? Moving on to 2011-156.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the Neighborhood Improvement Program.
Mr. Hilpert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an amendment to the Neighborhood Improvement Program, which is, as Moreland was here earlier, it kind of addresses some of the issues that have come up over the last year or so with our process. What the new ordinance would require is that all petitions would be submitted to the city by March 1st of each year, and I think at the brown bag, there was some discussion about possibly moving that back. But the reason for that is that that way, we wouldn't have a situation such as this where someone has come to you and there's no money available for it. Rather, in the future, submissions would be by March 1st. The mayor can consider that in his budget, and the council consider that, can consider that in theirs. The petition would be deemed accepted if it's funded, and it would be denied if it's not. Petitions would be on a form provided by the city and be for at least one block. The NIP would be limited to curbs, gutter, and sidewalks, and no longer include streets, which we've not ever done one of those, I don't believe. At least 75% of the petitioners, of the, of the block's residents must apply and sign on to it, as opposed to the 50% required now, and at least 75% must propose, must pledge to pay their cost share upfront. Those who don't pay their cost share upfront would be subject to a $25 initial, additional fee. The fee would be set per linear foot by the city administrator in Schedule Y, and it would currently be set at $25 per linear foot. And just so there's no confusion, the Moreland petition would be considered under provisions prior to this ordinance, and the, most importantly, the cost under the prior ordinance.
Any questions, Drew, on 156? Okay, seeing none, we'll have first reading of Bill 2011-157.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the food code of Jefferson City, Missouri pertaining to mobile food units.
Drew, you're up again. You're lucky night, guy.
Indeed. And this is the bill that Ms. Graves spoke about earlier. There is a current prohibition against having a mobile food truck on sidewalks smaller than 50,000 square foot, feet. Ms. Graves approached staff about reducing that size of that. We suggested they speak to the public, planning, Public Works Commission, which they did. And the, the commission, committee, I'm sorry. The committee recommended four or five changes, and we've put that in the ordinance. The ordinance would essentially allow it on any sidewalk, I'm sorry, on any parking lot, so long as they don't block ingress, egress, fire hydrants, or site. They would not allow tables and chairs on the parking lot. You can't use up so many parking spaces that the business would not have the required parking spaces under the zoning code. A mobile food unit cannot operate within 1,000 square feet of an active parade permit or festival permit. The commission, committee thought that was important to avoid someone sitting up just outside of one of these festival districts. And any violation of the provisions would allow the director of Planning and Protective Services to revoke the mobile food unit immediately and give due process thereafter. Oh, if I might, one more thing. Ms. Graves mentioned increasing the fee. Staff looked at the way we did the fee and determined that was the appropriate amount. As you all know by now, Hancock says you can only charge a fee for what you do, and so we think it's at the appropriate level, so we've not recommended any change in that.
Okay. Any questions for Drew on 157? Mr. Harvey?
Actually, it's, the question is for our city administrator, because I believe he was the, the attorney at the time. Why did we, or what led to the original size requirement when we went through this a few years ago? Can you explain? I can't remember, is the reason I'm asking you, Nathan.
Well, they, the council at the time did not want mobile food units in the downtown area. So we set it on parking lots, and we made the parking lots big enough that there'd be kind of room around them.
Okay, but no, no specific reason other than they wouldn't, one unit would, one unit would not fill up a parking lot? I can't understand why we had a specific size requirement for mobile units back then, and we're willing to, staff recommends that we approve this ordinance now, which is a complete change in whatever the mentality was at that time.
The thought at the time was, actually, the size requirement is based on the, Schultz parking lot. The thought was that that was about the minimum size that you could have, where people could get in and out and, you know, park around it and pick up their food and that, that sort of thing. I think that the, that the staff's recommendation on this current bill, something that comes with a caveat, that we're willing to try this, but I think there is a certain amount of danger of, of it being in an area that is too small or too close to other restaurants.
Dr. Pope, did you have any feedback, or did you want to weigh in as far as what used to be?
I recall, Mike, we were, we were there during that time, and my recollection of it was that we had no problem with the mobile food carts. They were, they were operating fine, and there were several of them, but an individual got the idea to take a mobile food cart and park it permanently on a little bitty narrow space, and I think they made doughnuts, if I recall, and they just parked it permanently there. And we had no way to address this. And this has been six, seven years ago, maybe, or more, anyway. We came up with this, and it sort of maybe almost threw the baby out with the bath water. We were trying to deal with someone taking a food cart and parking it permanently. And I don't know that the other people were actually put out of business from that, but that was the end of the food cart operation. We had one down at, well, there were several of them, but it had something to do with a little bitty lot right across the street from, from Way, what's the, yeah, it was right across from Wayley's, and maybe some other people remember that.
Okay. Councilman Scrivener?
I, I think part of our discussion when this came before committee was that the, there would be a certain element of self-policing involved in terms of the parking and so forth, because business owners, I would think, would be reluctant to give up too many parking spaces, so they probably wouldn't grant permission for one of these units to park on their lot if it became abusive of their parking space. And in, in response to the issue that Dr. Pope just raised, I hadn't thought about the possibility of someone parking one permanently, but I don't see that this ordinance, the way it's written, would necessarily stop that from happening. But an amendment that required it to move every four hours or every two hours or what have you certainly could address that if that became a problem.
That's something you might want to think about over the next couple of weeks?
Yeah.
That's in there. It's section, section B of the existing code requires it to move at least once every 14 days, it has to be gone from that location for 24 hours. That was the, go home and get, and clean the thing up and bring it back.
Well, 14 hours, I visualized a, a, or 14 days, I visualized that the mobile means mobile, and so it's not going to be something that's going to be there for long periods of time, but, but rather would maybe go, go home each night or what have you. And I think the way the presentation was made to us, that that's what the current owner visual, or the current business has, is visualizing as well. But someone else who comes in and applies for one of these licenses may think more in terms of letting it set for extended periods. So that might be, like you say, over the next two weeks, we can discuss that amendment or possibility, and, and maybe somebody will want to offer amendment like that.
Okay. Carrie?
Thank you. And this particular ordinance does apply to the privately-owned lots in the downtown, which are very few. It seems like, I recall, maybe the number three, only maybe just a handful of lots or even out there that this would apply to, so I don't see that that would be an issue. And actually, the owners operate a business in the downtown area, so I think that there could even be other restaurants currently in downtown that might want to reach out in the community in different ways. But I have to really give credit to the presentation and the homework that you've done on this particular issue, because if you weren't at Public Works and Planning to see it and have any questions, it was so thorough and so informational, and I learned more about mobile food trucks than I ever thought I would, but how it's really a trend in a lot of communities, and it's an attraction, and how it can really benefit the community. But it was pretty amazing presentation that you had, but I think that you have high standards with what you've done here, and it would be something, like, I don't think we'll run into the problems we had in the past, because I think that this ordinance really covers any of those issues, and the presentation you made was, was very thorough and interesting and helpful to draft an ordinance that I think it will be better because of the work that you've done for this, and even for other businesses that may want to reach out and start, get in on this trend that you may be starting. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Any other comments tonight on this issue? Okay, moving on to 2011-158.